The Senate's chief.
Oh, man, it looks great.
Not as good as in this.
I think, uh, alright, go ahead, Charlie, six thirty seven.
Okay, everybody, six thirty seven. Time to call to order the Lebanon City Council meeting for October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, roll of call, please.
Belky, here. Bennett, right here. Farnish. Pharaoh.
Here.
Mars, Skankowski.
Here.
Crumzik.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Washington.
Here.
Woody.
Please join me in the flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance to the flag.
The United States. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I made a motion to approve the omnibus agenda. Start with that. Your second answer to North Section. Roll call, please.
Washington.
Yes.
Belky.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Marsankowski.
Yes.
Crumzik.
Yes.
And Pharaoh.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, now we'll move on to the audience. If you have anything to say, move up to the rail, state your name, and we are not allowed to answer any questions back here, but if you have anything, it may be answered during the rest of the meeting. Hey, Sharon?
Okay, Sharon Guile, uh, this is follow on from Cody's hazardous waste comments last week, uh, with the MS four storm water permits. Madison County Residential Recycling hosts a monthly pickup of household hazardous waste that Illinois EPA takes care of everything. It's usually on the second Saturday of the month in Wood River. Uh, it's open to all Illinois residents, not just Madison County. You need to make an appointment on their website, which I sent that information to Cody so it can be available to all. Um, appointments run from eight to two forty-five. Examples of things they take oil-based paint, hobby chemicals, cleaning solvents, antifreeze, old motor fuel, pesticides, pool chemicals, things with, uh, mercury like thermostats and such fluorescent lights, household batteries, aerosol and spray paints, et cetera. Um, note, they do not take latex paint, which isn't hazardous. However, don't dispose of latex paint, as Cody was mentioning. You can just leave it out with the lid open or stir in kitty litter or commercial drying stuff and then put it in the trash once it's solid. Um, and then on a different topic, um, you were gonna, it said last week, you're gonna talk about the nuisance vegetation ordinance, um, tonight. Uh, makes, please make sure that any revisions and such do not cause problems with having native plant or pollinator gardens or landscaping. Thank you much.
Yeah, thanks, Sharon. Anyone else? No one? Man, can you lose my dollar persons?
I got some.
Okay.
Kind of a long thing.
Get your now.
Uh, yeah. Alright. Good evening, everyone. Um, I think we all need this reminder. Uh, after the meeting last week, I was really feel like someone needs to say something about how our behavior echoes, uh, throughout this community. So I looked up some handbook from municipal government educational resource by the Illinois Municipal League and it states the following. One, be fair. The words be fair should be guiding principle in conducting a meeting. Indeed, fairness is mandated by the Illinois Constitution and the United States Constitution. This also encompasses common courtesy. Generally, we cannot go wrong if we treat everyone at the meeting in the same manner that we want to be treated under similar circumstances. Two, do not allow emotions or rationality to take over a hearing or a meeting. Do not allow the passion and the prejudice of the moment to interfere with our rational judgment. Three, learn the rules. Four, pay attention. Our job is not to argue with our fellow council members, but rather it is to listen to our const- constituents bring their concerns to council and pay attention to what is being discussed at the meeting, even if our minds have already been made up. Five, think about the future of our community. As we are all finding out, there is no substitute for carefully planning for our community's future. We cannot anticipate change when we are constantly reacting to immediate needs and circumstances. We are setting ourselves up for failure if we do not, if we do not also proactively plan for the future. Also, the future of our community depends on us working together to achieve all of the changes we hope to see in this community. We also need to stop putting down the community we represent. I know things have been bad for a long time, but we have to stop coming to meetings and carrying on like camp like councils of the past. Our behavior up here is a direct reflection of how we feel about our community. Our constituents feel this. It is hard to be proud of where you're from, of where you are from when the people who represent your city are behaving in such an immature manner. I have witnessed this from council members before I became an alderman, and I am so disappointed in the behaviors of my fellow council members this last week. You made no difference in the conversation by having, by behaving that way. You actually set us back into the same patterns of the past Lebanon City Council that we hear complaining about all the time. We all have to do better. Six, consult with experts. Some of our projects have an enormous impact on our community. They may be of strategic importance. It is important for us to have projects carefully reviewed by experts. Any agreements or ordinances connected to these projects must provide the utmost protection to me, to the many as pally, excuse me. Learn to contact experts to help you form your decisions. I was reminded of this by Mayor Woody the other day. We as council members have, had the ability to contact the lawyer with any and all questions we may have. I was unaware of this, and we have an incredible resource available to us. Let's make sure we're utilizing it. Seven, leadership. As a leader in this community, we must have the courage to speak up and articulate the vision that we have for our city. Too often, public officials remain silent or passive and put off making decisions or taking appropriate action. Now, this is something that we are learning from past regimes passing decisions to the point we were at with several issues in our city. We have to be leaders in the community. When we put each other down and discredit each other during meetings, we are really discrediting the entire council. Eight, holding public office. We all need to keep in mind that we are public servants, holding a public office. Understand that there should be no personal reward other than having achieved something good for our community. Now, people who witnessed our meeting last week reached out to me about the behavior of our council, described the meeting as embarrassing, pathetic, barbaric, and gross. Unfortunately, this is not the first time I've heard of the behavior of our council in these terms, and that is disappointing. But I'm still super hopeful. I know we all came to these desks with the intention of bettering Lebanon and moving us past, past and into the future. Our mayor ran on this uh, excuse me, premise and won. Another alderman ran this premise and won, and our city clerk ran on that position and won. My fellow aldermen, the people who elected us expect us to make a change. The change begins right here in this chamber. Thank you.
Anyone else? No other older person? Okay, we'll move on then. Move on to committee reports, uh, streets and alleys.
Recommend that, uh, we approved the ordinance on amending chapter twenty-eight of that Lebanon sidewalk reimbursement code. I've been talking about it for past four meetings.
It comes from committee, so it doesn't need a second, any discussion?
There, Charlie, there was a question, um, about whether or not it requires a licensed contractor. I didn't want to answer that. We did specifically include in it for it to be a licensed contractor because these are city property and the risk, because we're the ones tasked with repairs and those kinds of things. Um, our discussion was that it was better for those to be by a licensed contractor who knows what they're doing rather than the potential of somebody coming in and doing it that may not have all of that expertise, may not be complying with all the codes and the I dot requirements and things like that. So the answer to the question from last week is yes, it does require a licensed contractor.
Yeah. Yeah, I got a question over there. Um, so like if someone's like putting in a new driveway and I'm pouring my old driveway or what have you and uh, part of that sidewalk had to get tear up because of it, am I still able to pour that piece of sidewalk? Or does that have to come in? I have to take, get a contractor to come in to fix that?
Well, the sidewalk portion will require a contract.
So this is for the reimbursement.
Permits to do it. Because these, the sidewalks, even if you're not asking for reimbursement, the permit itself requires a licensed contractor specs audit for us to ensure that there's compliance with all of those, uh, I dot regulations, because there's different thicknesses that are required at different parts, different widths, and, and one of the things we did with there was tie our requirements to I dots requirements rather than setting an established four inches, six inches, four feet, whatever it is, because it changes more, because I think Cody was mentioning to me that at one point it was four feet and it may be five feet and maybe six feet in some places, so that's why that was tied that way.
So you're saying that if RJ is pouring his driveway and there's a sidewalk that goes across his driveway, he can't pour that portion unless he has a certified licensed concrete contractor, right?
Yes.
So that doesn't make a lot of sense to me because if Blake is gonna go out and make sure that all those, those procedures are followed, it would be the if it would fall blank more than. I, I don't understand why that would be an issue there. Yeah, I, I agree with you because, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't you have to go out there and inspect before the pour? Yes, but he has to inspect the footings. He's asked to inspect everything. I mean, I, when, when it says own driveway, that's what I'm saying. I know how it can get messy, but um, at the same time, that's a huge expense to the homeowner do that. Because you're calling out somebody just to do that part, that's expensive for them. I don't know if there's any way to get. Yeah, even with the sidewalk aspect.
And I, my understanding was part of the concern was um, with making sure the mix was right and all those kinds of things.
Or that's on the, that's on the concrete.
Yeah.
You have to write, you have to order the right bag mix.
I mean, if you have the, if you have the, if you're gonna go at this yourself, I'm sure you can figure out, you know.
I mean, if you wanna put a, so to you guys, if you wanna put a rider on there and talk to him and you pour your own sidewalk and something happens, the city's not gonna pick that unless it's inspected property, you just have to put it in the orcs. So.
Kind of messy, but I don't know, there's gotta be some way. Table. I'll talk about. Yeah. I mean, if it's, if it's your own house, if you're doing somebody else's house, it's one thing, but if you're doing your own house, you're gonna wanna, you're gonna do it the best way you can. Probably better than a search, believe me, I've been searched by contractors before and sometimes I'm like, really? So I have to watch them.
So anything I ask, I'll use as an example for tonight going off RJ's letter. It was in front of you last Monday, and now we're table on something. I'm glad you table on it. I'm glad you're looking at it, but take the time to look at it, make sure.
But I, I personally, I, maybe I completely read over it, but I didn't see the part where it said that it'd have to be the contract. I didn't.
Twenty-eight thirty-two provides that for the construction plan, it would include documentation of the condition of an existing sidewalk, sidewalk along with an estimate of cost from a licensed contractor. So the construction plan, which is what the permits issued upon, requires an estimate from a licensed contractor.
But do the, do the contractors themselves, I mean, are they like, is there a license to have to pour concrete? I mean, I mean, there's a lot of guys out there fly by night that don't have licenses to, I mean, the only licenses I think you have to have like, right, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is electrical in plumbing?
Plumbing, yes. Electrical is kinda hit or miss. I mean, a lot of people say that they are licensed, but technically you do not have to be a licensed electrician to work on your own own property, and then a lot of people, I mean, they have electrical companies, but that company carries that license, so then the people working for them don't have it yet.
Right. Wasn't the language we said approved contractor? Was that what you used last?
And Washington's got a question?
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have a lot of contractors that, uh, live in Lebanon too, that do this for a living. So, I mean, are we gonna ask them to go out and hire somebody else to do what they do for a living?
I think maybe we were trying to get at was someone that has the insurance and is, is an actual legal license business or, or legal business, not somebody that comes up and says Jim Bob's plumbing and then has a van and then Jim Bob's not actually a plumber, but he has a card that says LLC. It just has credentials to show that they're insured, so if there is something that happens that they're covered, if someone trips on that sidewalk or someone falls on that stake where they're doing it, means we're all like, those we don't think about too, but talk about it, bring it back if we want.
The only can, the concern was, and the reason we included it from that discussion, and I'll amend however you guys wanted to, was the sidewalks are not just use of the property.
Right.
The sidewalks are in use of every resident of Lebanon. And so this was viewed as a safeguard to make sure those were done in the, theoretically. In the vessel way possible, uh, that was the idea behind that. That's why we included it. The way you did, but if you guys want, you just have to tell me if you want me to remove the licensed contractor or it and all, altogether. Or if you want a provision allowing the property owner to do it themselves, so long as they're compliant, then we need to add a secondary provision about whether or not we want some kind of frame version of the program or not, if, if they're doing it themselves, because obviously part of the reimbursing is for the cost of them hiring somebody to do the work. That's part of what we're this program.
Should we pass it with the amendment of adding property owners as long as Blake comes out, checks the inspection, did everything, makes out that homeowners can do it and being reimbursed for it, like pass the pending amendments?
So we don't think it's my inspection.
Yeah, I think we'd wanna put it all in language that you guys are willing, if I don't want to.
So, so we, so we table and we can just modify it and come back with it, right, correct?
I would say you have the discussion and and the, the mo- the motion would be to table it for amendment on X, Y, and Z. So you're gonna tell me what I am amending to be re-proposed? If you guys vote that way, so. Cause you can either vote to table it altogether, to send it back to committee. You can vote to, for me to amend it with those specific amendments to be brought back at your next council meeting. It wouldn't go back to committee, it would just come back to you as amended. Or you can not do either, and you can move forward with it as written.
Well, aren't we kinda talking about two different things here? You brought up that somebody was just cutting through a sidewalk for a driveway. But I feel like if we're paying half for a, a whole sidewalk, we, I got no problem wanting to contract them.
So what, so what say the council?
Is it, I, is it only contingent upon the city paying half of this? Up to this far. Up to that. Uh, this, we're paying for it out of our own pockets and it's still required to meet the, uh, requirements of, uh, well stated there. How is this?
You, you listen, Luke? That's a, that's a thing for you.
Say that again.
Is this only, uh, for a homeowner?
So, so we're doing two things here. The first is, is that technically um, our code did not have any kind of provisions requiring permitting for sidewalks or how that permitting process would work. Um, and then also, so we're one implementing how that permitting process goes. And then two, coupled with that is we're updating how the reimbursement, um, provisions work so that it's not just a cents per foot, which is what it used to be, um, by bringing it up to, up to fifty percent depending on certain factors, and those are, are listed in there, including what the condition of it is and things like that. If somebody has a two-year-old sidewalk that has a small crack in it, we're not gonna pay them to replace it, kind of a situation. Um, and then with that, it kind of updates our requirements just to make it in, in line with I dot. So that in order to get reimbursement, it has to be in compliance with the I dot requirements.
But, uh, one more time, with clarity, say, you're saying for a potential person, uh, Lebanon, Lebanon's, uh, resident, if they want to apply for the city to come up to fifty percent, then they have to comply with I dot and with what the ordinance is going to read. But what if I want to put my own sidewalk in, would I then have to be complicit?
You would still have to file a plan, you would still have to file for a permit, and your permit, construction plan would require you to be in compliance with the I dot regulations.
So either are.
Correct. Either way, you have to comply with it. The side, public sidewalks need to comply with I dots regulations.
What we've run into is people pour two-foot sidewalks. And two foot's not enough to have two people cross. It doesn't meet minimums. Doesn't meet city minimums. We're just updating something from, again, and I'll reference, uh, ambiguous ordinances from the seventies. So that's not clear. So we wanna make sure that we're following the rules and regulations of how the sidewalks are set up when we have grants. Because if we pour all the S R T S money out there, which we have to file I dot spec, and then we have ours that's a foot shy of I dot spec, so we have a bunch of three-foot sidewalks, we need five-foot sidewalks. Then we've wasted all our time, now we have to pour a two-foot strip. So we're just trying to make sure that as we do grants, we're gonna match that grant. So no matter where you go, new sidewalk, if you pour it, if I pour it, I can't pour it over here. So if you pour it, whoever pours it, it's gonna match that five foot or four foot mark, and then your specs for driveways and crossings.
Either way, you're gonna have to hold a permit. And correct, every time it's like that. He's gotta come out there and expect to make sure before you pour and everything else, he's gotta go throw it, and then after you pour, he's coming out. Am I right, Blake? You gotta come out there again, and if there's huge humps and things like that.
Right, this, I mean, this is all gonna be new ground because there's not the permitting for that now, you know, there's no, that's not getting pulled for the sidewalks, I get poured, so. But yeah, however, however, it wants to, everybody wants it to work out, you know.
I mean, it sounds really professional licensed contractor, but we don't know. There's been these contracting, there really isn't. You're licensed by cities normally, and then you get bonded. And so maybe it could require bond. It costs maybe fifty, a hundred bucks to get bonded, but either way, it's gonna get inspected, and if it's not done correctly, Blake is gonna fail it, and they're gonna have to rip it out, and they're, they have homeowners, like homeowners insurance too, so.
So.
You know, I don't know.
Looking at it the way it's written, it were, all it says is that the construction plan would include, would include the documentation, we can do this thing along with an estimate of the cost of the licensed contractors. I think it's, I mean, it probably could be read to where it doesn't specific, in nowhere in it doesn't say that the work has to be done by the, by, uh, by the licensed contractor.
You, so.
My, my question is, would you have to, to get to file for the reimbursement, you would have to have a contractor cost bill.
Correct.
Even if the home, if the homeowner, because the homeowner comes in and says, hey, it cost me ten thousand dollars.
Right.
But really, it only cost them five thousand, now they.
So what that does is twofold. The way that it's written, just looking at this again, as we're talking about it, because of the concern, so the construction plan is part of what is filed with the permit. If they don't have a licensed contractor, their construction plan would still have to have what they're planning to do, all of those kinds of things, and still would have Blake's inspection. But it'd be the committee that would approve the permit. So the committee on streets and alleys would be the one that would approve that permit. So it would come to you guys, and you guys would look at it and say, we're okay with this construction plan, we're not okay with that construction plan. So that's technically the way that this works as it is. Um, it doesn't explicitly, of course, require the cons, the licensed contractor to do work. Now, obviously, if they come back for the reimbursement, they'd have to be able to show actual costs and things like that.
First, third foot.
As part of the, as part of that plan, so if the concern is, is that, then it would be you guys in the future that would approve the plans, the permit with or without the licensed contractor.
Now, for logistics question. All of this sounds good, but you, you mentioned that the permit would then come back to the committee for its approval. We're not experts on all that stuff. Have some experience with, but we're not experts. So that would mean that the city code enforcement officer will need to come to that meeting when those come up, or somebody with knowledge about it to say, this is what it is and it's correct, and we'll be, this is what we're gonna be doing. Otherwise, we're doing nothing different than what we're already doing.
Correct. I would, I would anticipate, now, there's two more parts to this. One is the permit. I would anticipate Cody or Blake would look at that permit and make a recommendation with it, that this either meets the I dot um, regulations or whatever, or not. The second part is then, when they come back for the reimbursement, the reimbursement itself goes to the superintendent of streets for, to make an initial recommendation on the reimbursement amount for the council to approve. So both of those things, I would anticipate that you would have some kind of a recommendation going into it.
So, so what say the council? You wanna table the whole thing and do one more clarification?
Yeah.
I would send it back rather than table it, well, then it can, it can move, request me to come back.
So the motion would be to refer back to committee. I will make some amendments to clarify the things we've talked about and give you a new draft for next.
Well, we, we, we would pass it as is with those, with those modification or whatever.
No, it would be a motion to, to refer back to committee.
Okay.
I'll move the refer this back to committee for clarity.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, long. Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Bennett.
Aye.
Pharaoh. Crumzik.
Yes.
Marsankowski.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Belky?
No.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to finance.
Mike?
Uh, we'll meet Monday night. Michelle sent a couple of things that we'll talk about then. I don't know the details, but it'll be the fifth district report, the annual fifth district report, and, uh, fixing some sidewalks, uh, in this historic district, with historic.
That it?
That's all I know about at this point.
Okay, ordinance George?
We'll meet on November third at six thirty. We have four recommendations tonight. First one is the committee recommends authorizing and directing application for the two thousand twenty-five Safe Throat to School Us the RS Program Shared Use Path Projects.
The council committee, so it does need a second, uh, any discussion? And roll call, please.
Belky?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Kramzik? Yes.
That it, that's it.
Okay, number two, George?
Uh, the committee recommends an ordinance amending section twenty-four dash sixty-one of Lebanon rest and weed growth as a nuisance.
And this one council committee too, does need a second, any discussion? And roll call please.
Kramzik?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Washington?
I don't, I don't understand this one.
The promise that we've already started to vote.
You, you want to stay in then?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Pharaoh?
Yes.
Belkey?
Yes.
Hey, um, number three?
Uh, committee recommends resolution making separate statement of findings. Of facts on one online two nine Sullivan Vista Group own special use permit.
The council committee doesn't need a second, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Do all the feedback where I can send shorts now.
Washington?
Yes.
Kramzik?
Yes.
Belkey?
No.
Bennett?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay. Pass it, okay, number four, George?
Committee recommends an ordinance, the ordinance granting especially use permit to envision unlimited. For a small community home at one zero nine two nine Sullivan Vista Drive.
Yeah, the council committee doesn't need a second, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Belkey?
No.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Kramzik?
No.
Smith?
No.
Washington?
No.
Bennett?
No.
Five, no, two yeses, that doesn't pass. We want a water sewer.
Uh, so we meet Monday, October twentieth, um, at six thirty. Uh, today though, I had a really good meeting with Peter and went by and I got to go and take a look at the plant and all that kind of stuff and talk about a lot of great things and. Um, look forward to working more with them and um. It uh was a great meeting, so I appreciate your time uh this afternoon and uh showing me around and. But yeah, until Monday, October twentieth.
Well, that's it. Okay, cemetery, Amber's not here. Uh, they meet Monday, November third, twenty twenty-five at six thirty. Health and safety, Glenda.
Uh, we need appropriate twenty at six thirty.
Okay, thank you. Public property, Paul?
This is City Hall, my purview.
Public property, right?
Yes. I know we had a, a conversation about that last week. And uh. So. I know, you know, a couple of people went over. Do we have any? You have any?
We'll go on to executive session later on to discuss it. So, so I, I would, I would just wait until then.
Until then?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can just make a general statement if you want to.
Well, I mean, basically, we're just um trying to figure out what the best options are, you know, to make a really good decision. Uh, this has been law for many years, so we don't want to make it quick then. Well, we want to keep everybody safe here and everybody healthy, so. There's a lot of things on the table, so just forgot lots of it is driven by money. So um. But it's also driven by taking care of the people that are working in here, because they're special people and uh. Going to make sure that they're taken care of well, like, like in little of their families, so. So anyway, we'll go back.
So did you uh say when you're gonna meet next?
No.
Okay, you, you want to look at your uh agenda?
I don't have that.
You don't have that?
November third.
Okay, what, what time, buddy?
I apologize.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, personnel, Aron, I mean, Mr. Geller.
Meet Monday, October twentieth, six thirty.
Okay. That it? Okay, that's my turn. Okay, I'm gonna read you a list of, of letters that have been sent out to different uh. Businesses trying to get them to come to Lebanon. One is, uh, number one is Save-A-Lot. Trader Jones. Aldi's. Ruler. Walmart Neighborhood Market. Shop and Save. Subaru in Offenberg for possible dealerships where the uh Ikea was down there. Uh, Benny Ann, see if they want to expand their store from Mascooda. Uh, True Buy that's in Highland, to see if they would be willing to expand their, theirs and. Sent one out to Dollar Tree. So we haven't been sitting on our duffs up here doing nothing, but it's just waiting on getting some kind of uh reply from these people. Okay, I just read a list of businesses that have been contacted about possibly locating here in Lebanon. I pause to mention this to all you keyboard complainers out there, that is source of potential businesses. That are out there, uh, one source of potential businesses before even considering the location is city Facebook. Therefore, your opinion lacking facts needs to be heavily weighed before leaving your brain and entering your fingertips. All negativity needs to be filtered before just being disseminated. And maybe afford your, made it afford you some personal satisfaction that could damage possible chances of businesses located in Lebanon. From thousands of years ago, there's a Bible verse that says, uh, first Corinthians ten twenty-three states. We are free to do anything, but not everything builds up the community. That's all I have to say. Uh, so now we'll move on to clerks on vacation. So you'd like Paul to make over here? Do you agree? Is that yes or no? Okay, we'll move on to treasure. Jessica?
Uh, I have a couple things. First, the audit came back. Um, I'm not gonna go over into detail about it or anything like that tonight. But um, all, everybody should have received a uh digital copy of it. I believe Paul sent those out. If you would like a printed copy, there's a couple on the desk. I will be gathering that stuff together to put that in the paper and the things that have to be on there, but if you have any questions. And you would like to email those to me, um, then I can work on getting those addressed when we do kind of speak on the audit. Um. It's not pretty. We knew it wouldn't be pretty. Um, I think most of the things that we have found in there though. Um, I believe we've already made headway to correcting. So, just to kind of give you guys, if you have any questions, let me know though. Uh, the other thing I have is we have three CDs that are coming up this month for renewal. Um. We have a twelve-month CD that was at four percent. We had a thirty-month CD that was at three point six percent and we had another thirty-month CD that was at three point six percent. Um, negotiated back and forth with a few different banks, um, including First Federal. And Farmers and Merchants. And then I also went and did check the Illinois funds, as I told you guys I would for our investment portfolio. Um, Illinois funds is a flux, like a flux rate, and it was at four point two when I spoke to them. Uh, First Federal was willing to do a twelve-month CD at four percent for us on all three of those. Um, so I would like to make the recommendation that we keep that money local, as we said that we would do with those investment accounts. Um, and put that at the four percent. The checking accounts are the three point seven five, so this locks us in for a year of being a little higher. Um, the longer CD rates, the interest rates dropped pretty substantially. Um, but also with everything that we have going on right now in our city finances, I wasn't real comfortable locking them in longer than a year either. Um, so that's why I just sent the twelve-month CD and, and recommending that for all three of those. So I just need, um, any questions and I need approval to be able to sign paperwork to put those into those twelve-month CDs.
Need to do that.
Who said? Okay, any discussion about what uh Jessica just had to say? Hey, we, uh, roll call please. The group?
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kramzik?
Yes.
Marzenkau?
Yes.
That it? Is that just, um, Luke?
Just to reiterate something I passed along to, to mayor. Um, if any of you have questions about anything that comes up. Um, any communications with you guys, as long as it doesn't fall under like economic uh development, Tiff stuff. Um, it falls under the retainer, so it doesn't cost the city anymore for you guys to call me. Or email me, or ask to meet with me. It makes no difference, so. Please feel free to do that, to take advantage of that, because. I can't do my job unless I know as much as I can about what's going on in order to help make recommendations and help. The city do what it needs to do. Um, to that end, um, last week I came over and met with Charlie and. Um, Blake gave me kind of a tour of the building so that I had some personal idea of what we're dealing with, with the building as we're talking through and looking at. Um, what we're doing, which is the same thing I did with New Bayton when we went through that process, so. Um, I am somewhat familiar with the, looking at the needs of. You know, with communities and stuff like that. I also met with Chief last week. Um, to get a feel for how things are over there as well. Um. I know there's some things that Mayor and I, RJ and I are gonna sit down and go through as well. And I think I'm gonna try to coordinate a meeting with um Blake and Chief and, and um the mayor. Um, to help streamline and make our ordinance violation, ordinance enforcement, um, better. To make, to make sure we're being as effective with that enforcement as we can be. Um, now that doesn't always mean writing more tickets. Sometimes that means just being more on top of it or, or, you know. Making sure that people understand they have to comply with our codes. Um, the other thing I think is on here, it's kind of a talk, had preliminary conversations with Cody about was. Um, setting up agreements with both the school district and possibly with McHenry. To try to help share resources and things like that to, to make sure we're all working together. Um, so I'm hoping that that, um, we'll keep working forward and we'll have that. Um, uh, for our future meeting. I think that's everything I have.
That it? Okay, thank you, Luke. Chief's not here, but PD, you have anything?
Yes, I also want to introduce our intern. This is Walter Billhever. He's from the Netherlands and he's a senior at McHenry, majoring criminal justice. He's also on the golf team here. So if any of you wonder if we're running two officer cars now, it's, it's the intern, okay? Uh, he's been with us for about a month and a half and you're enjoying it so far, right?
Yeah.
You learned a lot?
I have, yes, yeah, been awesome.
You like the American system?
I've been here for four years almost now and it's been a blast. Yeah.
So it's a good experience for him. Also, his parents are police officers in the Netherlands, so. So, he's got about another. Six months, very good?
Right, yeah, for me.
Been going back to, back home to become a police officer.
Well, welcome, Walter.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Okay, move on to streets. Cody?
I'll keep mine short and sweet. I know it's the time of year, leaves are falling. Our creek keeper is out on Tuesdays and Thursdays. For those parks, so if you have spare vehicles, make sure you bring them in the driveway. Um, because a lot of people obviously have work, so that would help us out tremendously. And uh, the next thing I have is if it's not a city tree, please keep your limbs in your yard, not on the road. We had an issue that someone ran over a tree branch that someone put out on the road, thinking it was a city tree to pick up. We don't pick up limbs if they're from your backyard, especially if you're trimming your tree. And uh. Try and keep all that in your yards. It's really hard for us to keep our infrastructure nice and flowing. When you guys call and say, hey, our uh catch basin's overflowing, well, ninety-nine percent of that debris is people blowing their leaves and stuff in the streets. Uh, it is an ordinance violation, as you heard Luke, we're working on streamlining that to make it easier to remind people. Um, maybe we'll get Penny and Code Red and remind people about to do that, but it does wreak havoc on our infrastructure systems, so. Uh, let's just bear in mind, there's five of us, plus the five of wa- uh, water and sewer. And they really don't like when I call and say, hey, you can come have you to stick out, so. Uh, let's try and make sure that when we're working together, it's for other reasons. That's all I got.
That it?
Cody? Yes. Does, does Sydney have a place you can drop stuff off?
Uh, not at this time, but I've been into a couple things. So, it's fair with us.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Cody. Okay, Penny, you got anything?
No, I'll save all my savings for Monday.
My savings for next month?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mister uh, Rick, Rick, Rick. Blake, you got anything?
Uh, just real short and sweet. Uh, thirty inspections from the last time I've talked to you guys about what we got going on. And then as well, there have been, uh, here in the last little bit, there have been several reports uh submitted on the voice Lebanon app. It's the best way to do it. That way it gives us where it's at. I do drive around, I do see things, but I do miss things, I am human. Uh, the reports that are in, we are working through and we are trying to get the ordinance violations that are out there corrected. Talking to people, making sure their grasses are mowed, weeds are taken down, cars removed, you know, the, the stuff that everybody emails in about.
That it?
All I got.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we want unfinished business. Since this is referred to you on the way, uh, Jessica, you want to go ahead and read that and then we'll.
Uh, yeah, committee moved to recommend uh the ordinance approving the transfer of city bank accounts to Bank Springfield and establishing policies. Um, I would just share, I put a letter on your guys' desk, uh, that is from Eric. Um, who will be overseeing the accounts at the branch. He typed out and stated again what. Uh, conditions were finalized in those accounts, so if you guys have any questions. But it did come from committee for a recommendation to pass that.
Council committee, does they have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? Roll call.
Belkey?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yeah.
Marzenkowski?
Yes.
Kramzik?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. Uh, the new business surplus items, you want to say anything, Cody?
Under what, I'm sorry?
Surplus, surplus items?
I do want to touch real quick here, there's a couple things underneath for surplus. We have a orange wood chipper that we used to have, their tree truck that we used to. Uh, grind up smaller limbs when they're thrown in the street back when I guess we did pick them up for whatever reason. Uh, we're going to get rid of that. To touch on that as well, I'll get with uh Luke on this and get the uh. Resolution for this, but the old city tornado siren, um, this is not because of the condition of the building. This was a thing that was going to happen regardless. It is a nineteen fifty thunderbolt two, I believe is what they consider that, so if you collect. Nineteen fifties tornado sirens, please give C O a call when we put it posted up. And then with that also, we probably could add you a nice nineteen fifty-six generator, gas generator, flathead. Uh, engine, that's in the back here too, so that'll be coming up very soon, so. If any of you at home like to buy old equipment, now's your chance. It'll be next week and you'll have events.
Right.
Uh, so you'll come up to City Hall, you'll put in a letter, sealed bid, and then you just put on there what you're bidding on, it's everything, then just put it in your envelope, but uh. If you have a classic car, maybe it's worth putting it in, Ron. I don't know if you need another engine. So, but it is an old Air Force pool behind generator that is a gas. It's an old, it's a pretty cool piece of history. I just. I don't, I don't need it. So please come again. Please put bids in, so. That's all I have.
Okay, hey, Cody, I did hear from some citizens, I was saying that the new siren out there. This is the old one that was taken down, right, and replaced out there?
It has been replaced, correct. So that was through St. Clair County. Um, so St. Clair County has that system updated now. The software for the old siren is going to be obsolete, so at some point, the siren is not going to activate anymore, which is. The software for the old siren is going to be obsolete, so at some point the siren is not going to activate anymore, which is, I think, current already. Um, the new system, we have nothing to do with this through St. Clair County, so if there's any consol- uh concerns, comments, or anything like that, you can reach out to St. Clair County, E M A. Um, ask for Brian Whittaker and he should be able to help you out with that.
Okay, no, I was just gonna say, some citizens have said that the old siren was better than the new one, so you just, what's his name, Brian what?
Brian Whittaker, St. Clair County, E M A. They did help us out and donated a bowl and saved us a hefty amount. Okay, so, easy off.
Well, okay, thank you, sir.
On the, on the uh surplus items, won't we make a motion to ask the attorney to prepare the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured we were.
Yeah, if everybody's good, we'll.
Moving forward with these items, moving forward with those items?
Forward with that, then you would vote to refer it to me for preparation.
I move that we request the city attorney to prepare the resolutions, et cetera, to dispose of surplus items.
Okay, have a second? Okay, Glenda? In, in your discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Marzakowski?
Yes.
Crumzik?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, I think number two is, this is what you were talking about earlier, wasn't it, in our government, I was, I told you, so, okay.
Yeah, so this is kind of like with the, they was wrong, how this goes to the um council ran, so we were going to talk to you guys and see if you're in Bay Harbor working with the uh L C U S D. Uh, there's a couple of times where back and forth, they have a piece of equipment that we might need or manpower. We were gonna set it up just like we do with um Scuta, which is their manpower would come up and help us, but they would still, still get paid through the school or vice versa. Then you know, if we can come down and help. Um, a firm believer that this small town could come together again. I think the first step is it's patching the gaps between any of the, any of the local government and or McHenry. We haven't reached out yet, so I don't want to get ahead of the gun here, but the school, I think it would make sense. Um, they paid for, not trying to jump the gun on this, but they do pay for unincorporated Montreal and unincorporated Mary Jane to be plowed. It's still actually a city street, so maybe we can get plows and run through there, but I want to make sure the council's comfortable with that too. I think it's it's smart, right? So we're, what you're kind of struggling in the city, the school's kind of struggling, we want to make sure that instead of renting equipment that we already have, I couldn't just use ours, vice versa.
Since we don't have anything specific, I'm thinking a motion on that.
Partner with the, the school district also.
George, would it be a motion, just like the surplus, to make a recommendation or a motion to uh draft a resolution for and then move with that?
The surplus, yes, we did.
Yeah, not talking about the L C S D.
The, it's more of a question to make sure that everybody's good with us, with Cody and I moving forward with trying to negotiate the terms of that, and then as long as everybody's good with that, then we will do that.
We didn't want to bring you a full negotiated thing and you say no.
So we're gonna move to, to request the city attorney and.
To authorize us to negotiate a potential intergovernmental agreement.
Yes, I move that.
No second.
Good. Any discussion?
Now, is it just the equipment or is it gonna be?
Everything.
Equipment and manpower.
Oh, okay.
So say, I'll give an example, say we end up pouring sidewalk and we need an extra person, if one of their staff was able to come up, vice versa. Okay, I'm just explaining for the camera people, dude.
That's what I just, I just added the question.
And I think some of the, I, I know that was like if there's things that we're already doing and it adds very little to what we're doing, but adds a whole lot for the school, this is one of those things where if we have a quick, like this kind of agreement where we'll do this part for, you know, the idea is we'll do this, that'll make their lives a lot easier. And then when we need help at different things, you know, sometimes in the summer and things are slow for some of their people, that maybe they'll have some time to help us with things or something like that. So I think that's the idea, in principle, behind it. Washington? Ben?
Yes.
Marzakowski?
Yes.
Crumzik?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Belkey?
Yes.
That's it? Okay, now we'll move on to number three. Um everybody, when I read this, everybody that's in the audience can leave or so, there won't be any vote, but we're gonna go on to executive session. Uh, request to go on to executive session for discussion of the purchase or lease of real estate pursuant to five L I L C S one twenty slash two C five.
It's like a, a motion.
Some of.
For a second.
Second? I'll say, second? Okay, any discussion? Roll call?
Belkey?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Crumzik?
Yes.
Marzakowski?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Okay, the people who stay behind there, hey, Cody? Cody, I want you to stay, but everybody else needs a clear action.
Let's see if we have this, stay for me, staff, just in the back.
Oh, again, oh, okay.
Probably a treasurer, tries to automatically.
Yeah, she, you can say, Blake can stay, says he can do it, I don't, I have Cody stay because of what's involved.
I don't know.
No, no, all right, and.
You might, you might, make sure they understand their skills, like action items.
Hey, folks? There's no action items after the executive session, because you can just go home and watch TV or eat a banana or whatever.
Public is off. That's it?